KKJZ FM and HE1 Long Beach, Los Angeles. This is KJazz 88.1, a service of California State University at Long Beach.
We've got all your jazz favorites, plus the great American Songbook here on the Steve Tyrell Show. We're gonna kick off this second hour on a Monday with a great Ira Gershwin lyric. And Ira Gershwin wrote a lot of great songs with people other than George. And this is one of my favorites. This is one of my favorite lyrics of his he wrote with a Russian composer named Vernon Duke. I recorded it on my very first album, The New Standard. And this is Joe Sample playing with me on the great Vernon Duke, Ira Gershwin song, "I Can't Get Started." But we're gonna get started on KJazz 88.1. You're so supreme. The lyrics I write of you dream. I dreamed day and night of you speaking. Just for the sight of you. But what good does it do? They consulted by presidency. You know Hillary let me to tea. But still I'm all broken hearted. 'Cause I can't get started with you. No. No, I'm all broken hearted. 'Cause I can't get started with you.
Say we have the roll call, please? Oh, no, pledge of allegiance first. I'll read it today, so I didn't ask anymore. Call me, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of the United States of America. And to the rule of law and justice for all. Can we have the roll call now?
Mayor Mussoleva?
Did you say mayor?
Yes.
I'm not used to hearing that.
You're here?
I'm here.
Mayor Protenver Papa?
Here.
Councilmember Deaton?
Here.
Councilmember Sloan?
Here.
Councilmember Miller?
Here.
Are present?
Thank you. By motion of the City Council, this is a time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda and/or rearrange the order of the agenda. Are there any changes?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to pull items. I have one item I want to discuss, but I want to pull items D, E, and F.
Okay.
And additionally, on item A, I have some additional comments for the, and some were presented to you on the dais, but I also have additional comments I'd like incorporated about my words at the last council meeting. If they can just be incorporated, I'll give them to the city clerk. Otherwise, I'll pull A and we can discuss it.
Are there any objections to accepting the minutes as modified by Mr. Miller?
Can we take a minute and read them?
Sure.
Because they were just presented on the dais.
So do you want, do you want me to pull A then? Oh, no, you don't, you don't have this one.
Oh.
That's one, I have one more. That's one of them, and I have one more. Do you want to read it now, or do you want me to pull A?
Man of the city clerk, what do we do?
I defer to the city attorney.
Well, if the council's willing to allow Councilman Miller to amend his own remarks, there's no need to pull it. If he wanted to read the amendments and discuss the suggestions, he should pull it and have it discussed.
This is my, my own remarks. But that is kind of a, the one you have on the dais is kind of a culmination, not my comments, but really I was trying to clarify the section. So that one needs to be reviewed. These are my comments. On my own comments.
It's really a pleasure of the council. If you're willing to defer, you could do it here. If not, we should have the item pulled and discussed.
Let's pull it.
And mayor, if I may also read the additional items that presented to council in addition to the minutes. Distributed to the council made available to the public were the items that Councilmember Miller referred to in part, page four of the January 11, 2016 minutes. Also pages one, two, and three had typographical errors that are presented to you. On item D, the consolidated annual financial report, changes were made to page II of the consolidated annual report identifying that the city clerk is an appointed position. And on item G ordinances, we received an email from Seth Baker in support of urgency item, urgency ordinance number 1651. Thank you.
I'd like to take a moment to read these. Or just peruse them.
If you're pulling item A anyway, you can put, you can read those changes during the discussion of item A.
Okay.
You just need a motion to approve the agenda otherwise.
Okay, motion to approve the agenda.
Send them.
As.
Send them. So we're pulling items A, D, B, and F.
Great.
Thank you.
There are no presentations scheduled for this evening. Sorry to disappoint you all. I'm sure there's someone out there that would love to be presented with something.
Did we get a vote on that? It's like three, three yeses, I see. Unless the lights aren't working.
There's five. I just jumped ahead, sorry. At this time, members of the public may address the council regarding any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on any items on the, not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Matters not on the agenda may, at the council's discretion, be referred to the city manager and placed on a future agenda. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the microphone, state their name for the record. All speakers will be limited to a period of five minutes. And any documents for review should be presented to the city clerk for distribution. Is there anyone who would like to speak this evening?
Sorry. My name is Ann Gumbelson. I live at 4273 Ganderberry in College Park East. And I want to talk to you today about, I need to find it on here. Thank you for letting me speak. We love so many things about living in Seal Beach. We lived here for about 10 years. But most of all, we love going to the beach. And this summer, we were down there watching our kids in junior lifeguards. And my husband mentioned that he had to use the restroom. And I said, well, why don't you go up to the public restroom? And he said, I would rather spend $10 at the hangout for breakfast that I wouldn't eat than use those god awful bathrooms. And I have to say, they're really bad. Last Friday, I went down and I ate at Riverside and used the public restroom there. Well, I didn't use it, I went in there and decided not to. It looked like the toilets hadn't been scrubbed in months. They had a slime on them. There was sand everywhere. The walls are stained, and there's no toilet seats. And then I came down here, I got all fired up. I came down here to the pier restrooms. And I go in there, and there's two that aren't working, and there's a big bag over them. I printed out pictures, but my printer stopped in the middle of it. It's disgusting. The walls are stained with mildew. It's unusable. And I'm asking you, as a city council, to do something about the restrooms so that the people that live here can actually use them. That's all I'm asking. And I'd like to know what can be done and how I could follow up on this to make sure that something is done.
I think Public Works will probably take us on tomorrow and see what they can do about it.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Who do I follow up with?
Michael Ho. He's our assistant director.
Thank you.
And the city engineer.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for bringing it up. Anyone else?
Hello, honorable mayor, city council, and staff. My name is Terry Bersinger. And tonight, I am here representing the Seal Beach Chamber of Commerce. And I am here today to invite all of you to our state of the chamber that we're having next month in lieu of our regular monthly meeting. It will be at a new location, Glen O'Malley's, that those of you who attend are used to. We're going to host the next three at Old Ranch Country Club. And so, next Thursday, February, not next, I'm sorry. The second Thursday of February on the 11th, from 7:45 to 9:00, will be the state of the chamber. And I would like to just invite you all to come, and also the city staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you for personal invitation. I believe we received one in the mail. Anyone else?
Good evening, mayor, city council, and staff, while we're in Seal Beach. Tonight's agenda is pretty short. There are only six items on the consent calendar. But actually, I was expecting three more. And I'd like to ask staff, or ask the council to ask staff, when these other three items may be coming before you all in the public. The first has to do with implementation of the California minimum wage. As of January 1st, the minimum wage in California went to $10 from $9 an hour. And as you can see from the handout that, we'll eventually get to you, I guess. The city does have part-time workers that currently, at least on, at least in our pay grade structure, have paid, hourly pay less than $10 an hour. We went through this back in July of 2014, when the minimum wage went from, I think, $8 to $9. And at that time, the staff brought back a staff report and a resolution, actually, a resolution 6479 in June of 2014, to make adjustments to the pay scale for the part-timers to comply with the Minimum Wage Act. So I was expecting that on the agenda tonight. I know other cities have already acted on this, and so that's, that's my first question. The second item that I thought we would see tonight is the quarterly report from the city manager on her contracts that she authorized. Back in September, we had a presentation where she gave us a listing, I think it was three or four contracts that were less than $28,800, which is her limit to execute a contract without your approval. And at that time, there was a commitment made to council and the public that this would be a quarterly report. And that was presented back on October 12th. So I was expecting the second addition of that to either have been at the last council meeting or this council meeting. So I'm wondering, what is the status of the quarterly report on these small contracts that she authorized? Thirdly, back in September, we had a discussion regarding home business occupations, their fees, and whether the council wants to continue to exempt the, I think it's $212 or $213 annual license fee for home businesses that have gross income of less than $25,000. That was an issue that was discussed before the roll. There seem to be at least two of you, maybe three of you, that were concerned about this issue. Staff was asked to come back to you. Staff asked for time and made a commitment that they would come back in January to discuss this. So that's the third issue that I thought was gonna be on the agenda tonight. Change of gears on item D, which is the comprehensive annual financial report that you have. This is a very, very important report. It's 130 pages of numbers. It's really just a sea of numbers. I've been trying to make sense out of these for about five years. Our staff does a very good job of preparing it, and preparing it according to the standard guidelines that are given. And they get acknowledgement of that every year. But I've had a very simple question from this report that I'm trying to answer. And that is, now that all the, all the figures and all the numbers for the last fiscal year are in, okay, because this report applies to fiscal 1415, which ends at the end of June 2015, okay? This report has all the final numbers, all the final revenue numbers, all the final expenditure numbers for the general fund. So now that we have all the numbers, what was the budget surplus for the last fiscal year? It's a very simple question. It's not in there on one line. I tried to derive a number, and I came up with a figure of $4,000. Maybe we went on the, on the, at least two of you were not on the council when this budget was adopted. The budget was adopted in June of 2014. And at that time, staff estimated that we have a budget surplus of about $21,000. And that seemed like a low number, but staff always tends to be very conservative in how they estimate the revenues. And the thing is, we never really find out. They give us that estimate of $21,000 then, and I think this year, the estimate was $42,000. But we never look back. We're always looking forward with these budgets, and it's very, very hard, because so many things change. But we never look back and say, okay, how did we do last year in terms of our budget surplus? And it's a very important number. And again, I came up with $4,000 for last fiscal year. I did share my calculations with a treasurer of this room, and she hasn't had a chance to get back to me. But perhaps this item is pulled, perhaps you could echo this question, and perhaps you could give us an answer. I'm not saying my number of 4,000 is correct. That's just, I'm not saying that's correct. It's, that's my, I'm trying to derive that, and I may not be using the best method. So I'm not standing by that number. I'm just saying, we need a number that should be provided to you. And that's basically it. Thank you very much, your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Pierre Hirsch, and this is my friend Avery Anashewski. We're on the sixth grade in Seal Beach. We are here to discuss a big issue, plastic debris on the beach. Anyone can see it, especially after a rainfall. Plastic never goes away. It photo degrades, but never truly biodegrades. This means that the plastic breaks into smaller pieces, but doesn't go away. Recently, it was found out that zooplankton are eating these bits of plastic. These zooplankton are being eaten by small fish, which are being eaten by larger fish, which are being eaten by us. That means you and I have plastic in our bodies right now. Plastic gets into the oceans by rivers, like the San Gabriel. And plastic gets into the rivers by runoff, dumping, and littering. Plastic, it's, the most uncommon, common plastic found in the oceans and rivers are single-use items. Plastic that is used once and then thrown away. Last year, a friend and I did a survey of single-use items distributed on Main Street. Our plan was to survey 20 places. Ten out of the 20, 17 were kindly cooperative. She refused to be interviewed, and one of them was rude. 100% of the surveyed stores use single-use plastic items, and around 45% use styrofoam items. We know that Seal Beach cares about the plastic in the ocean, and it's clear that Main Street shops can make a difference by ceasing to provide single-use plastic and styrofoam items. We ask you to please take some action in trying to stop handing out these single-use use items on Main Street. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Joyce, Ross, Parkdale, Long Beach. We had a closed session meeting tonight about a big lawsuit that the attorney didn't give us any information. And, you know, between the city of Newport Beach and Seal Beach. I, for one, would not like to see the, what is a restaurant at the end of the pier torn down. We have a lot of people this weekend for the big race. We had the surf contest. People on the pier. We used to have a decent place as where we session came. I don't think you need to tear down the pier. You spend a lot of money on other things that people don't come to see. They don't come to see that old house. They don't come to see, see the memorial. And they don't come to see all of these food restaurants that are, that we pay for. I'd like to see the restaurant at the end of the pier, so everyone in the pier stay there. It was a lot of people out this weekend for the surf contest, and it was incredible to watch it on, at the pier. And it would have been nice to have the end of the pier open, so. And it hasn't, and I'm shocked. It's been five years, five years. And we spent money on all kinds of things, putting nothing on that year. And whose fault is it? The mayor, last year, that was built, what she was the pride of Orange County that could get anything done. The dirt that was supposed to go out on a, on a barge. That dirt began from that river down off the Newport, was supposed to go on a barge. And cost the city of Newport Beach $1 million to take it way out there. And then when that dirt is coming back, maybe that dirt will become sand. A million dollars we saved to that dirt. I don't know how many people come out and watch this like I do every day. Okay. As usual, I do have the city manager's credit card used for all last year. And some of this is outrageous. I don't know why we have to pay for her going over to the boathouse to watch the sunset go down and have drinks with all of her friends, and maybe some of the people that work here at the city of Seal Beach. But every weekend, and traveling. What are you guys going up to Washington, Seattle, Washington for? I can't believe all the traveling is being done. Sacramento, I mean, Coastal Commission doesn't work in Washington. So, that budget, that budget that I took a look at, came from the same people, I mean, I asked for an audit on the water bills last year. The audit was, it wasn't an audit, they even admitted it wasn't an audit. So, I mean, the budget, they brought back. I don't think, that was a good budget. I don't think we get a good answer for, from it. It's just like the city bill. Why, I mean, we take what they give us, and then we put it on paper. Remember the city bill? So how can they remember, last year, I requested an audit. It was not an audit, it was just a couple little pages saying, oh, well, they took the money from, because they had the redevelopment agency close, they took the money and they put it over here to pay. And some of these people are pure paid out of that. I mean, that's disgusting. And now we're gonna have our water bills and freeze to go? Come on. If you can't pay for something because they, in a certain department, why do we have them here? Why? Why can't they keep their department in line like the previous treasurer? It was here a couple of years ago. a couple years ago, so that they just took ten percent off and kept their department in line, and we would have money? I mean, I asked for an alley down there off of, between Seventh and Eighth Street, two years ago. Supposed to be done this year. I'll be up here all the time, talking about that alley. It must be done. Everybody is running over potholes for the same thing with the one on Main Street that backs up to Main Street. Whose district is that? I kind of get confused. Whose district is that? I think it's your district. But it needs to be done. If we can't even keep the bathrooms clean, we have potholes on our alleys, are we getting as bad as Los Angeles that can't even do anything for their sidewalks and potholes? But we can certainly go out to eat all the time, and to the boathouse, or we can really go watch the sunset go down. We can do memorials, we can build an old shack house over here, we can bring in dirt that belongs out way in the ocean, but we can't fix the pier. And so many people that came down over the holidays, the pier was packed just about every weekend, and we can't even get the pier fixed because we have to pay those other bills. And those other bills aren't performed for the taxpayers. They need to perform for the taxpayers, the bills, the taxes. The taxes, I mean, you know, you get more tax money than you ever did before, so come on, do what you're supposed to do for us. I know. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Okay, we will move on to the city attorney's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Pardon me, seeing the council met in closed session regarding the one item on the posted agenda, the Peterson case, I should just note, in response to the speaker, there's not a case between the city of Newport Beach and Seal Beach. The cities of Newport Beach and Seal Beach are both named in the same lawsuit by a Newport Beach former employer, employee. The council gave direction to staff and took no reportable action.
Thank you. City manager's report.
No comments tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Is this the appropriate time for me to ask questions about a comment out here that was made during oral communication?
You can ask a question there, and we can give a brief response, but the council can't engage in a discussion of those.
No, I don't want to engage in a discussion. The question was asked about the completion of the minimum wage. Are we going to have a report on that soon?
I don't believe so. I'll need to verify with staff, because we've already talked about it at the staff level, so I'll have an update for council later this week.
Okay. Thank you. And the quarterly report on the city manager's expenditures on contracts.
I believe it's tentatively scheduled for the next council meeting on February eighth. I know we had some clarification questions with the city attorney's office that we've been working on in order to prepare that next quarterly report. In reference to the home business occupation, I'll need to verify with staff, I believe it is scheduled for February eighth.
Okay. Good. That's taken care of. Council comments?
Yeah, I'd like to go back to the minimum wage. The minimum wage is something that we should look at as a council. Last time, at least I was opposed to the way we did it last time. They raised every wage salary up rather than just dropping off the bottom one, so we complied. I think it's an item that the council needs to look at that shouldn't automatically be implemented by the staff. Last time, everything was moved up, every salary, every salary grade was moved up rather than just dropping off the minimum, which means you're spending more money to the city. So, I think that, do you know, what is the status, Miss City Manager?
As I indicated previously, I need to verify with staff tomorrow, so I'll have to give you an update after I've had that discussion.
Well, our compliance was as of January first, right?
Correct.
But.
And I don't believe it's relevant based on, at least the discussion that we had. I can't comment with, with any clarity tonight until I've verified with staff tomorrow.
Okay. Well, you just, as a reminder, last time, we elevated every salary scale rather than just the minimum salary scale.
Right. And that takes a council action by resolution, so it's not something that would be done at the staff level.
Thank you.
So there was a resolution that we passed the last time I heard.
Correct.
Councilmember Deaton?
Yes, I just want to talk about the lifeguard contest, the surfing contest, the Kate and Seal Beach Surfing Championship. What a great weekend to have it. Four to six feet waves. El Nino might be bringing us a lot of rain, but in the meantime, we're getting some really nice waves. The Orange County Register did a wonderful piece on our waves that we had, where no one was going to Huntington, everyone was coming to Seal because of the wonderful waves that we had. And the pictures that they put in there of the surf was just really awesome. So, one of the best things about living at the beach is being able to walk down and watch those championships. And Joe, thank you for your department, and thank, please thank Seal Beach Lifeguard Carol and Carpenter for putting it together. It's a big event, lot of fun to go to, and a lot of fun to do. So, thank you very much for it. Great weekend for it, wonderful waves.
Councilmember Vera?
Yes, thank you. I also liked the surf contest, both Saturday and Sunday mornings. It was a pretty fun event, looked, it was well organized, and the waves were very, very well placed, I guess. Also, thank you, Pierre, for your comments and your survey. I'd like to meet with you sometime in the future. I'll be in touch, and we can talk a little bit about some of your ideas and try to get that going. Thank you.
Councilmember Sloan?
Yes, I wonder how many of you have seen the book that was put out by the Centennial? It's a great book. It has a lot of good information, very informative, and has my picture in one of the pages. Anyway, if you don't have one, I would say it's very worth while reading, it has a lot of good information, and plus it's very well done, very professionally well done, so, thank you.
Well, I don't have anything. I didn't do anything very exciting for the last two weeks. So, we'll move on to council items, of which there are none. Consent calendar, the minutes, do we go to the minutes? What's pulled first?
Typically, we take the items that have not been pulled and then go back to.
Can we have a motion on items B and C on the consent calendar?
Sound move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, please vote. Five to zero. Okay, now we go back up to the minutes, and the changes that were.
I have some additional changes I'm proposing. Do you want to see those? Obviously.
Well, we can approve them unless we see.
You also have the original that sent to the city clerk today with regard to Agenda Item B. I'm also proposing comments for council comments as well as Agenda Item D, and these are all my comments, and I've tried to put them in a more concise format for the city clerk's benefit rather than quoting myself exactly.
City Attorney, I was always under the impression you couldn't change minutes. All you could do was clarify where there might be wrong. Am I incorrect?
And, remember, the council can ask that minutes be revised before they're adopted. Once they're adopted, you can't change.
But you can change what actually happened? What was actually said?
Not what was, actions were taken by the council, but if a council member wants to propose a clarification to an item that was, or something was said, it's up to the council to determine whether or not that's an accurate clarification.
I just was always told you weren't allowed to go back and explain what you meant at the next meeting.
Well, that's a different issue.
That's right.
If the passman believes that the minutes are inaccurate, and that something was said that wasn't in the minutes or vice versa, that's one thing, but clarifying or explaining is a matter for tonight's minutes, if you're so inclined.
So what I did is, basically, I tried to work with the format that the city clerk put in, just to be consistent with her format. I took out of my own words, because I had originally my own words. I confirmed it changed to her words, then I didn't include everything that I put in there, but I put more than was put in there by the city clerk. And so, these are my words. They're all verifiable on the audio tape. If you want, I can read it into the record. That's the other option. If you don't want to read, if you don't want to put it in, I can just read it into the record for this week, and I'll be happy to do that if that's what you'd like.
I guess my only concern is, if this is what you said, then I have no problem with it. If we're creating new minutes, then I've got a problem.
I was astounded that the minutes were so brief. I said what I've got here. Again, I may have said he said, and rather than I said, I didn't try to put it in my own words. I tried to conform with the city clerk's. This is what I've done with Linda Devine for, I think, eight years. I understand the format.
All I'm asking you is, were these your words?
Yes, they're my words.
If they were your words at the time, then I have no problem with it.
That's fine. And if the city clerk checks it, now, these I weren't able to provide through in advance. If the city clerk finds that they're not my words, I'll be glad to discuss it at the next council meeting. I mean, I'm not trying to slip on by.
No, I just, I'm just simply asking.
Okay. I'll be glad to discuss it. Now, this one, the one that you have on the day I said I gave her, I was, that I got off my own words, and I was trying to clarify, because I couldn't follow Agenda Item B, so I was trying to clarify it based, I went back and listened to the audio, and I tried to clarify on what I heard on the audio. But again, I don't know if you've had a chance to read, hear the audio and listen to it.
I received the information from you this afternoon, but I haven't been able to go back to the audio to listen. However, Mayor, if I may, Mayor and council, when we are doing the minutes, we're looking at summary minutes in general. If a council member asks for something to be read into the record, then I do that verbatim. Otherwise, they are summarized. So that is why there are some verbatim and some that are not.
Okay. So these are the words I want, that I said, so if you feel that I've created something new, the city clerk is always welcome to listen to the audio and say if I've created something new. That wasn't my intention, I don't think I did that.
Can we continue the minutes to the next meeting?
Yes.
I'd like to continue them and, one, read them myself, and, two, have the city clerk verify what we said.
Thank you.
Is there?
Again, I caution you that what was presented to you by the city clerk, which was for Agenda Item B, that is not, that's just my own creation to try to make it, I mean, not my own creation, it's from the audio, but it's trying to explain it.
Okay, well.
I'm not, I'm not creating, again, you have to listen to the audio.
Which is a good reason to continue. I move that we continue. Second?
By the way, your words weren't exactly written in there, I'll read it, you threw a few extras in.
I'm sorry, I didn't get that.
No, never mind, never mind.
I didn't do anything with it.
Well, you read something in the record.
I have a second, Viera Papa, and please vote. Okay, five to zero. Then we go on to Item D, to Papper. The city of Seal Beach annual reports for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen. City Manager?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Tonight, we have here with us Debbie Harper from Land, Salt, and Lungard, who's our auditor. So at this point, I'll turn it over to our finance director, Vicky Beetley. She'll introduce this item, and is here unavailable to address any questions that the council might have. Vicky?
Thank you, City Manager Ingram. Mayor, members of the council, tonight you do have before you a request to receive and file the comprehensive annual financial report for the period ending June thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen. With, we got to the annual report as Debbie makes her way up to the podium, in case there's questions. There are four letters that are incorporated as part of the report, the audit communication letter, the report on internal control, you actually have the Caffer document itself, then the appropriations limit testing. This is a report similar to what is done every year, and I'm not going to give a detailed report on the documents themselves, but be happy to, since I have Debbie answer any questions that you may have.
Do you have an answer to Goldberg's question about the budget surplus for fiscal year two thousand and fourteen, fifteen? Are you able to extrapolate it from this document?
The purpose of the Caffer is not to develop a budget surplus, Councilmember Miller. In reviewing, as I indicated to Mr. Goldberg this morning when I received the email, as time permitted, I would have an opportunity to look at his numbers and come up with an answer. But suffice it to say, he's correct. When the budget was presented, we estimated there to be about a twenty-one thousand dollar surplus, or somewhere between twenty and forty, I don't remember exactly. However, during the course of the year, there were approved budget amendments by this council that took that budget surplus and a little bit more. So, they actually had about fifty-four thousand dollars worth of operational budget amendments that were made in the fiscal year, and so there was not technically a budget surplus at the end of the year. But the Caffer itself is not a way to determine the surplus.
Okay. Thank you. Do you have another question?
I'm related to the Caffer, but it's on the topic. I would like to have an agenda item to discuss the possibility of hiring a new auditing firm for the city's audits.
I think that's not appropriate for this item number.
Well, then, I can buy it anytime during, I'm asking for it right now.
Mr. City Attorney, guide me.
Read the council policy.
I mean, the council member can ask for an agenda item. I would recommend that you make it through this item that's before you before taking up the question of whether to grant Mr. Miller an agenda item.
Okay, let's talk about the Caffer and Item D first, and then.
Go ahead and make a motion, we'll pass, approve this.
Second. Okay, everyone vote. Okay, it's five to zero. And now?
Okay. This reminded me of that I wanted to have an agenda item to discuss the possibility of hiring a new auditing firm to do the city audit.
Okay, and is that a three positive, three to two vote, or is it a four to one?
Is it a four to one? I'm sorry, I don't understand.
I don't think it requires a motion.
It doesn't.
Doesn't require a.
Any council member can ask for an agenda item.
Okay.
Okay.
Then we'll put it on a future agenda.
Within two agenda, two agenda, two council meetings.
A month?
I'm just telling you what the rule says. Yeah, that's good.
Okay. City Manager, you have that? Now, Item E, Historic Preservation Committee Guidelines and Policies and Procedures for Designating Historical Resources.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. At this time, I'd like to call forward Crystal Landavazo, who's our senior planner, who's been the staff liaison with the Historic Preservation Committee to summarize this item for you and address any questions the council might have. Crystal?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. The Historic Preservation Committee was established by this council in July of two thousand and fifteen, and has been since working to fulfill its purpose by establishing guidelines, creating policies and procedures, and beginning to establish a list of potentially historic resources in the city. The committee has thus far identified eight guidelines that can be used to seek potential resources. As this committee discussed, they determined that a resource which means at least one of these guidelines should be eligible to apply for historical designation. Once a property owner determines that he would like to voluntarily seek historic designation, he would submit an application to city staff. Staff would then work with the property owner to establish the resource, the resource's history and significance before presenting to the Historic Preservation Committee and ultimately to the city council. Resources that receive historic designation will receive a plaque featured and be featured in the city's inventory of historic resources. Property owners will also be able to apply for a conditional use permit that would allow them to preserve the structure and make minor deviations from the city's development standards. If the city council moves tonight to approve the proposed guidelines and the policies and procedures, staff would then be able to. and procedures, staff would then be able to contact the property owners of the structures identified on the committee's list of potentially historic resources. Staff can begin to inform these property owners of this program of the designation process, and ask if they would voluntarily elect to request this designation. And this summarizes the staff report that was presented to council, and staff is available for any questions.
Thank you. Your questions? It's your item, you pulled it.
The benefit here, one of the benefits, and a random negative aspects, and it's a great way to save our old structures, so I'm not against that, I just want to understand, is there any detriment to the homeowner?
No, the way that the committee discussed it, they decided that there wouldn't be any type of degradation done to the property. It would just primarily be a way of bringing attention to the property's importance in the local history of the community by providing a plaque, featuring it in our inventory, and it would also make the property owner eligible to apply for a conditional use permit. If they, at any time, needed to make any alterations or modifications to the structure, they would work with the planning commission, and in order to be able to make those modifications, while still preserving the overall structure.
Will the plaque be displayed, or they can display it if they so choose, or...
Right, they would be presented with the plaque, we would recommend maybe a location with them, as to where they can put it, on the front of the structure or the resource, but it would be the property owner's decision whether or not to install that plaque on the property.
Thank you.
I have a question. Yes, my question is, if a member of the community finds a structure or others that they would like have put on the list, how would they go about doing that?
They would be able to contact city staff or any of the Historic Preservation Committee members, and then staff can contact that property owner to let them know again that the program does exist, explain to them the process for applying, and we would be able to, they would be able to contact again staff or any of the committee members.
So, then a homeowner themselves could also contact staff and ask to be put on that list?
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Would, I'm sorry. Member Vera Pappa?
No, Mayor, the question I have is, if someone was on the list, and they didn't want to preserve the property, could they, have they done all it and built a new structure there, or any limitations on that?
No, unfortunately, we don't have any current municipal code regulations that would restrict a property...
So, they do whatever they want to do.
Correct, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Member Sloan?
No. My question is, by being on the list in Seal Beach, does that qualify the owner for state funds to restore...
Unfortunately, at least thus far, all of the resources that were listed on the potential list that was provided, none of those seem to be able to meet the state standards for historic preservation, so they wouldn't qualify for Mills Act or any of those.
Oh, too bad. Yeah. Okay, thank you very much, very informative. The Historic Committee's done a wonderful job. They worked hard. It's a lot of work. Yeah.
I move the item.
Okay.
Second?
Is there a second?
Councilwoman Deaton, a second is...
Oh, she did? Okay, please vote. What are we doing here? What's happening with the mics? Okay, five to nothing. Item F?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. This item tonight will be presented by our Deputy Director of Public Works and City Engineer, Michael Ho, and staff will be available to address any questions of council. Michael?
Thank you, City Manager Ingram, Madam Mayor, and members of the city council. Agenda Item F is an item that, a water main break occurred on July 28th, Tuesday, at the intersection of Lamson and Seal Beach Boulevard. This pipe was a water, domestic powerable water line that was built in the 70s, it was a 12-inch line. The Water Department went out and took a look at the area, and determined that they could not fix it themselves. We took it upon ourselves as an emergency to hire a contractor to repair that water main break. In conjunction with that repair, the gas company and other utilities were involved, and the gas company, since the fix, has been doing work on their line, which is adjacent to that water main break. As of right now, our fix is completely done, and the gas company should be repairing the rest of the area, which includes the street as well. And this agenda item captures the cost for all that emergency work that the city forces performed. Any questions? I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Councilman Miller?
I have two questions. One, as hard as I've been chasing the 28,800 limit, this is under that, so I didn't exactly know why it came to the council. And then, I'm on the other side now.
I believe previously, late last year, when a break occurred, we informed council that this break actually occurred, and we reported back to saying that we would come back to council and recapture all of it.
Okay, thanks, Michael. What about the gas?
Mayor, if I could. Councilmen, also, we're requesting the council adopt a resolution for a budget amendment, which is the city manager, I can't amend the budget.
Okay, thank you.
Regardless of the cost.
Thank you. What about the gas company? When are we going to finish? That's been quite some time, but it's been not repaired.
It has. It has. They basically said that they should be cleared probably within the next couple of weeks. A lot of their attention is this high-pressure gas line that they actually monitored, looked at, and repaired, and I think the last portion of the work is for paving the street.
Thank you. I have a request for an agenda item here, but do you want to wait till we're done with it, and then I'll make my request?
Please.
Okay. I move the item.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote. Five to zero. Okay, another agenda item?
Yeah, I would like to have an agenda item to discuss Resolution 6384 and City Charter Sections 107, 420, and 1010.
What were those again?
Resolution 6384, City Charter Sections 107, 420, and 1010. They all have to do with budgeting and that.
Okay, is there any objections? I guess not, can't object. Okay.
Madam Mayor, I would also like to ask if we could have a, an agenda item. I don't care if it's within the next month or not, just as staff gets time. I have noticed that within the city, we have some gas stations that put tape over the readers, the card readers, and some do not. And it seems to me, with as often as our cards are being used improperly, that all gas stations should be required to have those, so before using them, you can tell whether or not they've been messed with, and it's a very, very simple fix. And we do have them within the city, and some we do, and some we don't. So, I'd like to take a look at an item where we might require all gas stations to keep it taped.
Okay.
I'm just curious, what is that, Ellen?
Well, you know where you put your ATM card in? Well, it has a box there, and it's very simple for a van to come in, pull that box, put their own reader in there, put it back. You don't know, you use your card, they capture all your identification. In order to pull that out, if there's a piece of tape that goes across there, the tape is broken. So, some of our gas stations have that tape there, so every time you know you use that gas station, that you're secure, because it hasn't been moved. If they don't have the tape there, then you don't know.
Okay, thank you.
And I've just had my credit card ripped off now twice, so, and it's usually in gas stations, so...
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Thank you. We have scheduled one public hearing this evening, an ordinance prohibiting the cultivation of marijuana in all zones in the city. And we'll open the public hearing, and can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Our Community Development Director, Jim Basham, will present this item tonight. Jim?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. We, if you may recall, at your previous city council meeting, you adopted an emergency ordinance that prohibited the cultivation of medical marijuana. The ordinance that's before you this evening, the ordinance number 1651, is the formality that follows after that emergency ordinance that is inserted, if you will, the provisions are inserted into Chapter 11.4 of the Mini Code, specifically the Langley section that identifies that medical marijuana for cultivation purposes is prohibited. In addition, there is an ordinance number 1652 that also says that prohibiting the delivery of such commercialized medical marijuana within the boundaries of the city of Seal Beach. So, if it is the wishes of the city council this evening, the adoption of both ordinances would be appropriate. Thank you.
Are there any questions to the staff? No? Okay.
Your public hearing?
We'll have a public hearing. It's now open. Would anyone like to testify? On prohibiting the cultivation of marijuana in all zones and the delivery, mobile delivery. Seeing no one?
Just note for the record, that you have an email on the dais from Seth Eaker on Item G.
Is it on medical marijuana?
It is, it's on this item.
Oh, Item D, G, all right.
And he's indicating support for, oh, on number 1651.
It's indicating support, he's pro legalization of marijuana for medical use.
But he has no objection to this ordinance.
Okay. That we can't grow it in town. Can't sell it in town either. Okay, we'll close the public hearing, since there's no one here to testify. And would anyone on the council like to comment or make a motion?
I would like to make a motion that we adopt Resolution 1651.
1651.
Just for clarification, it's introduction and first reading of ordinance number 1651.
Introduce and conduct first reading of ordinance number 1651, considering a proposed zone test amendment 15-4.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Now, I'd like to make a comment, now that we have a second on the floor. I just think it's important for people to note that this also includes mobile marijuana delivery. However, it does not preclude an ill person having a registered caregiver take care of them that way. So, I just think that's important, because we do have some people that are very, you know, at the end of life and so forth, that it helps, so...
Without, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, shall we vote? Five to zero.
And then we just need a motion on ordinance number 1652.
I make a motion that we introduce and conduct the first reading of ordinance number 1652 prohibiting the delivery of marijuana in mobile medical marijuana dispensaries in the city. Guess my comment was on the wrong resolution.
Second?
Okay, please vote. Okay, five to zero.
Mayor, I'll just read both titles at the same time, if you wouldn't mind. It's ordinance number 1651, ordinance of the city council of the city of Seal Beach, amending Chapter 11.4.100 to Part 4 of Title 11 of the Seal Beach Municipal Code to prohibit the cultivation of marijuana in all zones in the city. And also, ordinance number 1652, an ordinance of the city of Seal Beach, I'm sorry, an ordinance of the Seal Beach City Council amending Section 5.7.0.025 of Chapter 5.7 of Title 5 of the Seal Beach Municipal Code prohibiting the delivery of medical marijuana and mobile marijuana dispensaries in the city.
Thank you. Okay, we have no unfinished or continued business, no new business, and we'll adjourn to the city council meeting on Monday, February 8th, 2016, at 5:30, to meet in closed session if deemed necessary. Thank you all for coming.